Hi. Good evening, everyone. This is the regular meeting of the Downers Grove Grade School District 58 Board of Education here on Monday, November 14th at 7:00 PM at Downers Grove Village Hall. This meeting is being live streamed for the public at Village of Downers Grove YouTube Channel. Listen to me, please go on.
Number Doshi is absent. Number Ellis? Here. Number Hannah? Here. Number Harris? Here. Number Olens? Here. Number Weiner? Here.
Tonight, members of the audience will have an opportunity to provide public comment to the board later on in the agenda. The board asks anyone wishing to comment, please pull out a card and indicate the topic to be addressed. Please can then be placed in the basket there to my right. I have allotted 30 minutes tonight for public comment. I ask everyone to keep up to 30 minutes apiece. All right, we're going to start off with the pledge of allegiance, and we'd like to welcome Indian Trail School, so please welcome Principal Ratner.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, good evening. We are really excited to be here tonight, and we are going to start off by introducing our student council co-sponsors. This is Katie Herkis, and this is Taylor Carroll.
Thank you. We have six officers here this evening that are going to share some about our student council. We're already impressed with the risks they've been willing to take and how much energy they're already looking forward to putting into this year, so we're going to turn it over to them.
Hi, I'm Delaney Lawrence, and I'm the spirit chairperson. Some ways we are spreading spirit at Indian Trail are we just had our red ribbon week to celebrate being drug-free. We ended the week with some stickers. Another way we show spirit is on Monday, we wear orange, and on Friday, we wear our school colors, which are blue and yellow, to show our school's spirit. One thing that the student council is planning to do is a kindness week in February. I'm very excited for all the spirit days that we will have this year. After all, spirit is very important.
Hi, my name is Rachel Bywater, and I'm the vice president of IT Student Council. At IT, we teach the students a lot of things that are helpful to them, like how to set goals for yourself, how to be kind and respectful, think about others, and how you can be your very best self. This year, we are working together to teach our students how to be respectful, responsible, and safe. When you walk into IT, you will see these three words as reminders in our hallways and classrooms. We are earning stallion stars for all of these things we do. That's the way our teachers help all of us be respectful, responsible, and safe.
Hello, my name is Kaylee Brady, and I am their, this year's, IT Student Council president. Kindness is a major focus of everyone at Indian Trail. We will be having a kindness week later in the year to focus on spreading kindness within our school community. We also recently had our first student council meeting where we made ornaments for Donner's Grove Community Tree.
Everyone should love Indian Trail because it is such a great school. There are many reasons why. One is because the teachers are very nice and help you when you need it. Another great thing is that everyone spreads happiness and kindness. We have fun activities and spirit days. Another thing that I like is stallion stars. Our amazing principal, Mrs. Ratner, made these up. The whole school tries to fill up the whole jar. Once we do, we get a prize, like pajama day. You can earn one by helping out and being a good listener. This is why you should love our school.
Hi, I'm Ethan Nylinger-Volt, and I'm the treasurer of Indian Trail Elementary School Student Council. At IT, we are a community, and we help each other. This can be seen by partners working together in the classroom. We have a grade-level buddies, and our PTA supports our students and staff. In addition to just kindergarten through sixth grade, our school is special because we have preschool and the RISE program. One reason I love being an IT stallion is because everyone feels safe and welcome.
One of the ways we inspire at Indian Trail is that we inspire other students to do great things. Our friends help inspire our creative ideas. Our teachers help us, inspire us to work hard, expand our mindset, and meet our personal needs. Our IT families help inspire us to stand up for ourselves, show kindness, and are always accepting us. That's the way we and people around us help inspire other people.
Organization. Hi, my name is Sanvi Kombad, and I am this year's Indian Trail secretary. How we are organizing our student council is new this year. We have six officers, those of us here tonight. Each class has two representatives that attend our monthly meetings, and we have mentors to keep our kindergarten and preschool classes in the know. We think that this will allow more students to be involved and giving back to our school. We are trying to have all of our meetings during lunch this year so that everyone has the opportunity to attend.
There are lots of new things happening at IT this year. We have a new principal, Mrs. Ratner. She has lots of new ideas, and one of the biggest changes is that we are earning stallion stars and the rewards that go with them. We are hopefully getting a new playground. We are planning, we are planning a fundraiser in addition to lots of things that our PTA is doing. We have lots of new students. We have officers in student council for the first time in a while. We gave speeches and held a school-wide election, even got new iPads and new cases. These new things have all got our year off to a great start.
Service. Hi, my name is Molly Nichols, and my job is service chair. Something that we plan to do is help the West Suburban Humane Society by making dog or cat toys. We would also like to have a Pop-Tad collection to give to the Ronald McDonald House. We will be selling pencils so that we can donate the money we raise to our new playground fund. Finally, we are planning to focus on keeping our outdoor area more clean. We want to buddy up grades to focus on picking up trash. We would also like to work on finding ways to keep the baseball field cleaner. Thank you for inviting us here tonight to share about the Indian Trail Student Council.
Thank you. You all did a wonderful job. I would like to introduce Mrs. Beth Johnson. She is our Indian Trail PTA president, and she's awesome.
We appreciate you having us tonight in the spotlight. Ms. Ratner asked me to present briefly on some of the activities of the Indian Trail PTA. I forgot my team to bring with to share this presentation, but we'll follow up. So, like many PTAs, we have three main missions, right? Supporting our students, partnering with our staff, and engaging our families, right? That's what every PTA's goal is at their school. And one of the ones I wanted to focus more on tonight was the fact of our engagement of families. We have a slightly different population at Indian Trail, right? Our percentage of low-income folks is higher than others. We have a transient population. So our goals are to make accessible activities for all families that are involved. We can't have things that cost hundreds of dollars to attend because we won't engage folks that way, and we recognize it. So these are some of the things we do throughout the year that is either low-cost or no-cost that the PTA supports. Of course, in addition to doing field days and book fairs and all the traditional PTA things, so we just wanted to point that out, that we make a concerted effort to be able to do that for folks and families so we all can feel part of the community and not excluded because of finances. So transitioning to the effort we had to make for the playground fundraising, it was quite a challenge for Indian Trail. Luckily, 64% of the budget was funded by the State of Illinois grant. I wanted to take a minute to thank Kevin Bardo. He has been fantastic, working with us over the last nine months, very open, always meeting with us, helping us along. But despite the fact that we were put up to a challenge of raising more than we do in annual, like our budget annually to come up with, we've been very creative and have been able to do a lot of things over the last, what is it, three or four months? We had a golf outing, we had a bags tournament, we had a board and brush, an open play. The students had a lemonade stand, which raised over $2,500 in one afternoon, which is awesome. And of course, just the regular contributions and soliciting individual donations, right? So all of that, to date, raised us about $17,000. We still have about $22,000 to go. The initial budget gap, as you see in the middle, would have been impossible for our school to raise. It would have been impossible for our families to contribute that much money. And so, thank you to the board for making that decision to contribute towards the playground for the preschool, because as you know, we're unique. We have the preschool and K-6. We have the RISE program, and that's part of what your equity concerns should be, right? How do you make it equitable so all schools can have a decent playground? And this was a great step towards that because without it, we would not have come close to meeting our goals for the year. We do have some things coming up, so maybe you all would want to contribute. We have a McTeacher Night. The staff has been fantastic at Indian Trail. They are doing, at McDonald's, doing McTeacher Night to raise funds for us. We have the Got Sneakers donation drive. Dr. Russell, I'm sure he has a lot of gym shoes with all your kids around.
I do.
For us. We have an online raffle that's happening through November 20th, some really cool packages like bears, tickets, and a patio set, like these donations that people got. And of course, we have grants and individual contributions. We have about another six weeks or so to raise that last $22,000. We're hopeful. But really, we wanted to thank you all for your support because our school, again, would not have been able to even come close to have a nicer playground starting for next year. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, now on to the fun stuff. We're going to talk a little bit about Indian Trail data. So, as you can see, and you've probably seen from some of the other buildings as well, we have up on the screen some of our growth from last year. So when we are looking at this, you can see that overall, and this is according to our ECR Data, you can see that ELA school-wide, we were not, we were close to making expected growth. Mathematics, we did make expected growth, so overall, we were where we should be. But you do notice that our ELA is in the yellow, and so that is definitely an area that we've been talking about as a staff, and I'll share a little bit more about that. So this breaks it down a little bit further by grade level. So we have grades three through six. So if you see for math, we are in a place where we have some higher-than-expected growth, we have some expected growth, and then we have some lower-than-expected growth. But overall, again, we are in hitting that expected growth target for our grade levels in math, which is exciting, especially given the new curriculum that was put into place. When we look at our ELA, we are in an area where there is lower-than-expected growth, and so that's definitely been a place that we want to focus on as a school this year, and it is written into our school SIT plan, which I'll be sharing. So these are just some examples of how we dig a little bit deeper into our data. So here is some of our ELA data from the IAR test. So you can see that we have green where kids are meeting or exceeding standards, but we have students in yellow who are getting to that target, and we have students that are below that target. And here are some examples of the areas when you look at the areas that IAR assesses, and vocabulary has been something that was, was worked on last year during our SIT plan, so that's a piece that we are taking and carrying forward. And so here's an example, same thing in sixth grade. So what are we planning to do about this? So this year, we are continuing to focus on the science of reading, and what's really great about it is that the district is also having a focus on science of reading, so we are kind of hitting it from two sides, learning about it from the district standpoint, but also we have some professionals in our building that are teaching us and working with us in order to help students in the area of reading. So this year, we are really working toward not only learning more about science of reading, but each grade level is writing a goal of where they want to go with the science of reading according to their own grade-level data. And here's the why. So our AIMS Web and MAP data, which is our benchmarking data, they do support the need for improved reading instruction across all grade levels. According to our ECR Data, like we saw in the spring of 2022, our school's overall growth in the area of reading is lower than expected, and we can see some of that particularly in the fifth and sixth grades. And we really feel strongly that if students are not getting the foundational skills in the primary grades, they are more likely to experience difficulty with more complex text at the intermediate grade levels. So here are some strategies that are part of our SIT plan. So as I mentioned, we're having professional development both from the district and from some of the reading specialists and interventionists in our own building. Each grade level is choosing an aspect of science and reading to dig a little bit deeper into. Today, actually, for our Professional Learning Monday, we worked on some assessments that we can give in order to find out where there are deficit areas with specific students. And we continue to maximize the support that we have in our building. Our intervention team is awesome. They are doing a wonderful job working with our students and also helping classroom teachers with strategies in their own classrooms, and we continue to service our students in small groups throughout the day. So obviously, it's important when we're looking at our SIT goal to make sure that we're measuring, measuring what we're doing, making sure what we're doing is working, and making sure that we have regular check-ins. So throughout the month of October, we really reviewed what was learned last year from the science of reading, just so we can get everyone back on the same page and understand why we're doing what we're doing. In November and December, the district is doing some training on the science of reading, and just like I said today, we set some goals and learned about some assessments that we can give. As a building, we are checking in again in February to make sure that everyone is working toward their goals and to find out, especially after our benchmarking in the winter, where we are with our data. And then we do have ILT, which is our instructional leadership team. We do have meetings monthly where we check in on all three of our SIT goals. I also wanted to share that we are looking at behavior systems for our SIT goal, which is our second SIT goal. So we have really worked this year to make expectations across the building, not just in individual classrooms, so that students know what the expectations are in every area of the building. Students do earn stallion stars, there's an example of them up there, when they are doing the expected behaviors in order to reinforce those behaviors, and it's been really fun to build community in our building. We did a glow lunch, we did a pajama day. What else have we done? Remind me. We did popsicles. We did a no homework pass. Yeah, so we did some fun things. And for our second semester, we are going to do a bingo board in each classroom where students can earn stallion stars and write their name in the bingo board, and then we'll call some squares every Friday. And important aspect of what we're doing this year for our behavior data is really making sure that we track it, so looking at how many kids are experiencing difficulties or who I speak with or have an office discipline referral, and talk about how, how we're talking to kids and how we're tracking that data in order to help kids succeed in our school. So that is it. Thank you so much. We appreciate it, and we appreciate all of you for being here too, to represent our school.
Thank you very much, Principal Ratner. And we got a couple of gifts for you, so Mrs. Jervis will come down and take care of that. Thank you for being here today. All right, listed on tonight's agenda are two communications received by the board. Are there any additional communications board members would like to share at this time? That brings us to the spotlight on our schools, our school report cards. Welcome, Mr. Sissel.
Good evening. Tonight, we're going to just take a brief look at Illinois Report Card data. We're going to look at the state assessment data. We're going to talk about summative designations, and then we're going to talk a little bit about the percentile rankings, which is one of the new ways we're looking at measuring our success through ECR. As this is night three of four in board meetings that I'm presenting on data and these kinds of things, this is going to be a summary level view, but there's a ton of information available both through the Illinois Report Card and at all of the individual school parent forums that I'll reference a little later tonight. So first, and though I know it's a little bit hard to see, the center picture there is what you see when you log into District 58's Report Card on illinoisreportcard.com, and it just gives some overview information. Thirteen schools, 5% mobility, our summative designations, IAR growth, and then to the left is a snapshot of all of the different places you can drill down and get more information. Tonight, we're really going to focus on our academic data, and then I'll just briefly touch on the Equity Journey Continuum, knowing that we're going to talk about that more in depth a week from tonight. So when we look at the next screen, when you click on academic progress, we see a few things. First, we see our overall IAR proficiency in the upper left at 47% for ELA, 52% for math. Just below that is our total proficiency as a district, which includes students who would have taken an alternate assessment from the IAR based upon their individualized education plan, and so those numbers are just slightly different. We see the growth percentiles for IAR. We see the participation rates for the state assessment, which is IAR and DLM at the right, and science proficiency up at the top right corner. Also, again, you'll see eighth grade passing Algebra I, and just one version of a number of performance scatter plots where you can see different representations of the data as you click into that area. Again, one of the things we look most at this is we, this is where we do look for that final confirmation on what our percent of students meeting or exceeding on the IAR. That's what, that's what they call proficiency. As a reminder, the state has designated level four or five out of the five levels of performance as proficiency for that assessment. IAR growth is calculated by the state in a couple of different ways. This is still, at the, at the bottom line, they take a student at the individual level and say, what was my previous score? And then compare my actual score to all of the other students in my grade level that had the same previous score. So that's a real quick way of how they, and then that becomes by ranking that. Each student has an individual growth percentile based on that, and therefore, any group of students then has a growth percentile as well. For the summative designations, they calculated the, the distance against the 2018-19 cohort across the state, because that's the last time there has been consistent data across the state. However, for the school report card, they calculated IAR growth against the 2021 cohort of students, which is consistent with what the school report card has done for many years, which is why the state chose that. However, for us, remember that we took that 2021 assessment actually in the fall of 2021, in the next school year, because in the spring of 2021, we had just made all of the preparations to bring our students back onsite for a longer day, and we chose not to devote the first 14 to 20 hours of that new experience to state assessment. We pushed it to the fall. So we have no historical data to say how would our students have done compared to a fall administration of the IAR. The vast majority of Illinois did administer that assessment in the spring of 2021, so just another sort of asterisk in all of the data that we have as we go forward. When we look at ECR, remember, they're calculating, they're calculating IAR growth based on individualized student projections based on past performance, local norms, and considering that range of growth. And so, again, we don't want to dismiss the state's calculations because they are there and they are accurate in that method. We also just want to recognize that we have committed to looking at growth in different ways in District 58. And so this is previously presented data, but just as a reminder, this is what our IAR growth looked like via the ECR platform for the 2021 school year in the spring in mathematics and in ELA. There's a lot of numbers on these slides, but one of the things we talked about is who would we compare ourselves to locally? And so we spent a lot of time over the past couple of years talking about comparisons to large elementary districts in DuPage County. So that's what's on this screen, is those districts. This is sorted by math proficiency, and so you can see that we kind of, we kind of fall third in the pack when we look across the board, and ELA proficiency is actually very similar, would be fourth if we sorted it that way. It's worth noting some of the other statistics that do have statistically impact on some of these things. The low-income percentages kind of grow as we descend, mobility rate grows as we descend, and also just looking at some of the per pupil expenditures and where we are at versus where perhaps 181 is that, you know, has a different proficiency level than we do. And again, a lot here, so this is all publicly available, but I won't dissect every piece of it. The next comparison is just the District 99 group, so these are all of the elementary districts that send students to District 99. And again, this puts us, you know, in, in, at the, at the top of the pack in terms of math proficiency. It would put us about third in terms of ELA proficiency. And again, you can see some of those growth percentile numbers vary a little bit by district. I keep going back to that fall IAR assessment was something we had never done before, and so when compared to that assessment where we had more instruction and it was a different period of time, the growth numbers are a little bit different perhaps than, than all of these other schools who did administer the IAR in the spring of 2021. Summative designations, this year of our 13 schools, we have 12 schools designated as commendable, and one school, which is Hillcrest, designated as exemplary. Ironically, some of you may recall that in the fall of 2018, the first time these came out, we had 12 schools designated as exemplary, and Hillcrest alone designated as commendable. So some interesting, you know, full circle or something, and again, it comes down to, as we'll look in the, and we've talked about in the slides, just where that all falls in the state and what that looks like. As, this is just a reminder that we've talked about previously, what goes into those calculations. Again, ELA and math growth as calculated by the state, the chronic absenteeism pieces and the climate survey, the proficiency targets and all of that. And really, you know, as we've looked at some of the individual schools' data, I talked at the last board meeting about some of those bonus points that were given for chronic absenteeism if it dropped from, for, in 2022 from 2019. Even the climate survey, getting full participation, we wouldn't have necessarily prioritized after a student returned from an extended absence, making up the state climate survey, right? We, you know, we give it in school when kids are there, but it hadn't necessarily been a priority for us to, to make that up. There are a couple of schools that if they had had a few more students take that climate survey, the score, the numbers they would have gotten actually might have tipped over the rating, and again, that's just something to reflect, and I think the instructional decision in making is sound, and I think we can know going forward that if, you know, we, we can think about then prioritizing makeups for that survey as an example of just ways to be aware of how this will be presented. So as I mentioned earlier, we've presented 11 parent forums thus far. We have Indian Trail on Wednesday night and Hillcrest on, excuse me, and Highland on Thursday night, and then we will have completed the 13-school tour. I appreciate all of the building principals' participation in these and preparing information. So we post also all of the very specific building-level data in AIMS Web, in MAP, and also in all of the categories that lead up to these index scores. So at the right is that final number out of 100 that the state calculates to give what they call that, that all-student-group index, which is what yields the rating. You can see at the bottom, the exemplary threshold for this year is 82.28. We have one school that tipped over that. We have three schools that are within one whole point of 82.28, and all of our schools really are within striking distance in one way or another of that target, but it's not necessarily a target that we set for ourselves every year. As I said, we've had years where we had 12 commend, or 12 exemplary schools. This year, we have 12 commendable schools. I think it really has to do with looking at the data as we continue to analyze it locally. And again, you can see even in 2019, that exemplary threshold was 80.12, and so that, that changes year to year as we go. Just a quick glance at the Equity Journey Continuum, this is all that's available on the Illinois Report Card relative to the Equity Journey Continuum. It shows the three areas that ISB has designated, student learning, learning conditions, and elevating educators, and then it indicates where District 58 is. Again, remember, based on 2018-19 data, because that's the last time the state had that full data set to analyze in this way. And it shows us squarely in the, the small gaps in equity to minimal gaps in equity range, depending on what's there. So at first glance, that is overall encouraging. What we'll take some time with next week is to unpack a little bit of the, the data that's beneath some of those things, again, which isn't publicly available, but just to get a better sense of both what is placing us in those categories from, from prior year's data, and if there are areas that we can focus some attention on. But we'll spend much, we'll spend time on that again next Monday.
Justin, can I pause you for one second?
Absolutely, great.
Going back to the previous slide about, on summative designations.
Yep.
Does the state compare all case, or all third through eighth graders in the same pool? So like are the cutoffs for exemplary and, and underperforming the same for middle schools and for elementary schools?
Yes, elementary, it's an elementary-middle-school group, and it's a high school. That's how they do the rankings. So, well, yes, that's, in this case, yes, that's how they do the rankings.
Is there a reason why they're comparing middle schools against elementary, like, for example, like why, why all of our, our middle schools are in the same pool as?
I don't know if there's a specific reason other than they've just broken it, I mean, really, they actually usually use the terminology elementary and high school, but the middle schools fall into the elementary for what makes up the summative designation.
And then just one other point, too, as we discussed at the curriculum workshop, these summative designations are tough to follow from year to year because the criteria, although it was supposed to stay the same, has changed this year. And so, you know, we talked about that attendance bonus point during the pandemic, so the rules do appear to be shifting a little bit in the middle of this when, when we weren't aware of that. So it's just another point of clarification I wanted to make.
The next few slides come from an ECR webinar that, that was presented after the report card data came out, and, you know, we've already aligned with this in, in terms of our achievement key performance indicator, but just to bring this back around, you know, they shared some of the they shared some of the reasons that it is, it's beneficial to look at, rather than raw data, to really look at those percentile rankings across the state in terms of thinking about how we do things. Percentiles are simple and things that we are very familiar with consuming. They gave the example of height charts and growth charts and things like that. It's not necessarily about what the actual number is, it's about what is that in terms of a percentile ranking of any group of people. We talked about the fact that those numbers are empirical, and this is an actual data point that John Gatta used. If you look at Illinois, in eighth-grade ELA for last year, 30% of students in Illinois are saying to have met standards. In other words, 30% of students across the state met or exceeded standards on the Illinois Assessment of Righteous in English Language Arts, got a four or a five. That's the bar that the state has set. So one way you can look at that is, well, 70% of our students are not on grade level. But then when you compare that, when you take that same group of students and look at them at the national assessment, which, to be fair, doesn't sample every single student in the nation, but is one of the only national comparisons we have, Illinois eighth graders are in the 86th percentile on that assessment. And so, it's just two very different stories when you think about how that can be interpreted. Certainly, across all of our data, we want to be looking at it honestly, but we also want to make sure that we are giving appropriate context to all of that. Percentiles, then, are also comparable. So where you have very different raw data as you look at different things, you can say, for any of these things that we collect statewide, we can talk about the percentile and make that a simple comparable thing. And so one of the pieces of analysis that they give us is our district percentile for numerous factors. And so we had looked at the left-hand side of this, our district value for ELA and math proficiency, and the percentile across the state when we established our key performance indicators. In fact, we looked back at these benchmarks and said, for ELA, our target was going to remain the 75th percentile statewide, but for math, because our prior performance had been so much higher, we raised the bar on ourselves and set that at the 85th percentile. If you look toward the right, where we have the 2022 district values and district percentiles, you can see that for ELA, we are at the 84th percentile in the state, and for math, we're at the 94th percentile in the state. Our math proficiency actually went up as a district, but if you know, our ELA proficiency is not quite at the 2019 level, and yet, even being below that with our actual number of meets and exceeds, as compared to the rest of the state, we've increased by 9%. And so, do we still want to see the meets and exceeds numbers go up? Absolutely, we do. That's work we continue to do. We want to see that move in the right direction. But contextualizing this, I think, is important. One other interesting piece that is on this screen is our participation rates and where that puts us in terms of percentile in the state. And it's just one of those, we have made tremendous strides in District 58, well surpassing the 95% participation mandate by the state, but just to recognize that even having 98.3% of students participate still puts us in the lower third of the state in terms of participation overall. And then we have, and I realize this is a little difficult to see on the screen, but just looking at, again, our key performance indicators that have, you know, we have put in place, we'll be looking primarily in this coming spring to see how we did, but this is, compares our 2019 percentage of meets and exceeds and what that means for percentiles versus our 2022 percentiles of students meeting that proficiency and where that places us. And so just a quick analysis says that, you know, our range in 2022 is much tighter, has come up in ELA, and we have nine of our 13 schools are at or above that 75th percentile of students meeting or exceeding. We saw our district number is in the 84th percentile, but individual schools, we have nine at or above the 75th percentile. And then the last side is the same for math. As a district, we're in the 94th percentile. We have nine schools at or above the 85th percentile this year, and a range from the 68th to the 96th percentile. Again, this is when we rank all of the schools across the state. In this case, to remember Harris's earlier question, the percentile rankings are done differently by ECR, so there's an elementary school district ranking, and then there is a middle school district ranking. So those of you with sharp eyes will notice that some of the numbers for the middle schools don't exactly align to the numbers for the elementary school. Herrick, for example, on this screen, is at 48.1% meeting or exceeding, which doesn't put it in order of meets and exceeds, but that puts them, because it's a middle school comparison, in the 92nd percentile across the state. So again, that's the extent of the data I was planning to review tonight. There, each school has that individual forum on their website where we've drilled down into all of the specifics that go into these categories, and that's available on websites and again at the parent forums.
So after you did all this, right, you're taking data from multiple sources, we're changing the rules of the game from the states, you know, it's kind of, you did a lot of work here. Like, what takeaways did you have that kind of influence your decision-making with your team and kind of the teams across the district?
I think, you know, at the highest level, I think what this tells us is that what we are experiencing, and it's kind of what ECR told us in the fall, we are back to expected growth levels. And so even, you know, as we are looking at where our students have come over the past couple of years, we are not seeing that same level of dip that the rest of the state is. I think that's what the percentiles tell us. You know, we're, even in places where our achievement in the IAR is static or even slightly lower compared to the rest of the state, our students have begun to recover more quickly, and that's exciting. I think that is something to celebrate. I think in terms of decision-making, what do, how do we respond to this data? It's been really exciting to hear each of the principals, you heard Principal Retner tonight, but to hear them prepare for these parent forums and really identify what has already happened. You know, we didn't wait until we saw these rankings or the designations. This was all part of the school improvement planning process that, you know, you've heard us say for years, when that process becomes more robust, we're going to have more direct responsiveness to this data, and it really is coming to life. And each of our 13 principals is in great command of their school's data, their school improvement plan goals, and tangible, actionable things that are happening in the building that relate to those goals. So I think, you know, it's almost a, you know, this doesn't, at a building level, tell me anything we didn't already know. It's not really new data. The new piece is the designations and the ECR percentiles. But in terms of responsiveness to the data, it's what's been happening at the building level for the past six to eight months, and it really, it really is exciting to see that take hold in a meaningful way.
When you look at just resource allocation, you know, taking it from a district lens and kind of focusing on individual buildings, if I look at Indian Trail ELAs, so they're in the 61st percentile, whereas Lester's in the 90th. How do you kind of look at resourcing and kind of helping that 61 become that 90?
So, I'm assuming by resource allocation, we're talking people generally, because that's generally the resource we have.
So it sounds like, you know, obviously, each school has its own challenges that we do our best to address, but as you kind of see data coming in that shows that wide of a range of performance or achievements in this case, how do you kind of look at, how do we help boost up others that may not be performing at the highest level that we're seeing?
Sure. So I mean, again, it is, part of it is that tier-one school improvement planning, like, what do we need to focus on in this building that will help raise student achievement overall, which will promote growth as well. In terms of resource allocation, we spend considerable time each winter looking across all of the schools in the district, looking at the students who are identified in tier-two or tier-three, which place them academically at risk or in need of support, as well as students who have been identified with IEP minutes. And we spend, I would say, several hours, you know, looking at that information and working to come up with a way to equitably allocate those resources across schools. And so we have actually seen increases in certain schools of intervention positions and things like that over the past few years based on that information. So I think that's, you know, that, and that data, it's not exactly looking at it from this dataset. We really look at that from the individual student needs, which should reflect in, you know, larger-scale data like this.
Steve, just to, you know, kind of piggyback off of Justin's comments, I think when you look at it across the board, when you look at the deliberate approach we've done as a district with math in particular, in being very, you know, prescriptive and working with our staff for professional development and centering coaching, that has really started to bear fruit as we look at our numbers. When we look at ELA, we've also seen some gains, but certainly, that is a focus area this year with our teachers in talking about identifying issues, you know, or concerns across schools and then across grade levels. One of the other things that is really picking up momentum in the district with Justin and Jessica Stewart is so many of, or so many of these come down to individual students and how they may or may not be performing, which each student's obviously a little bit different. And so taking a look at our MTSS system, and what supports do we have in place for each student who's below grade level, and how can we help those students, whether that's through math intervention, whether that's through reading intervention, whether that's through more time in tier-one, you know, all of those things, that's also taking place in the school improvement data reviews. And so, you know, to answer your question, another thing that we have to continue to do is to look at each individual student in taking a look at the interventions that are in place, and are they the right interventions? Are we seeing success? Why or why not? And then changing accordingly as we go through that. So that's another thing, and that's why the shift from RTI to MTSS is taking place, to really get better and better at that as we move along.
Well, I guess, how would you view that from your position, right? Like, one school's performing 50% better than another?
Yeah. Well, I think there's a lot of factors that play into that. I think one of the things with IAR data that we have to take a look at is, you know, mobility rate, how long have kids been in our system? Certainly, there is a difference between kids that start with us in kindergarten and finish with us in eighth grade versus students who move in. And so when you have a building that is going to have a lot of students moving in and out of it, it's not surprising to see the overall achievement level down. It doesn't mean that they're not learning and growing, but we do know when students move, the research is clear, you know, usually puts them about six months behind some of their peers. So mobility plays a piece into that. I don't think we'll ever be in a situation as a school district, of course, we want all of our schools to achieve at the highest levels, but when you have schools where students, you know, may have a higher percentage of low-income status or a higher percentage of mobility, the research is pretty clear in terms of the correlation in academic performance. So what we want to make sure, when we get students, how do we work with families to keep them in the same building and then continue them in our system? Because what we do know with our data is the longer kids are in our system, the higher they perform. And so, that's another factor that plays into that, that we look in that. We certainly don't just say, well, this kid's moved three times, so therefore, they're never going to be able to achieve. We do work with them and try and close those gaps. That's why the state has shifted to more of a growth model, and we're shifting to more of a growth model, because we want to know when that student was with us, did we make a year's worth of growth in a year's time? And if we're not doing that, then what interventions do we have in place? That's where we start looking at even things like summer school. The last several years, we've started giving students access to free summer school if they're not able to close that gap. We'd use some of the SR money for that. So those are some of the things that we take a look at as we're going through. But again, what interventions are in place? Do we need to change those interventions? Do they need to become more intense? When we're getting down to the student level, that's what it looks like, and it is different for every student. Every student, for reading, for example, one student may have a decoding issue, another student may have a comprehensive or a comprehension issue, you know, we really have to work with our specialists in those areas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to the reports to the board. First up is going to be Dr. Russell with the superintendent's report.
All right, I apologize in advance, it's a little lengthier than my last couple, but we have a lot of things to talk about. First off, the successful passage of a referendum. Last Tuesday, the District 58 community voted on the district's $179 million bond proposal. The referendum passed with approximately 67% of voters supporting the measure. I want to thank all the community members, staff, and board members who participated in the facility planning and engagement process for their hard work over the past several years, really, the past several decades. This work helped determine the referendum question and place it on the ballot for our community. This involves several community meetings, the creation of a strategic plan goal, a citizen task force surveys, and several other engagement opportunities. There's a great deal of work that needs to be done moving forward, and the district will continue to update the community. Additionally, we will work with our established committees to ensure transparency and fiscal responsibility moving forward. Thank you again to the community for its overwhelming support and faith in the school district. This is an exciting time for District 58, but a lot of work needs to take place. I also want to highlight the school board. On Wednesday, November 2nd, the Board of Education was one of only 33 districts in Illinois to earn the IASBs, that's the Illinois Association of School Boards, top governance recognition award. On behalf of all of us in District 58, thank you to the Board of Education for their hard work, sacrifice, and dedication. It was an honor being with the board when they received that award, and congratulations. Tomorrow is November 15th. That marks the official statewide observance of School Board Member Day in Illinois. Each year, this day is an opportunity to show support for your Board of Education and the individual school board members who are committed to providing a local voice for educational decisions. I'll kind of cut the whole thing short, but, you know, school board members are unpaid volunteers, and it is a great deal of effort, especially during the pandemic in the last several years. It is not an easy thing to sit up on this dais. At least, the superintendent gets compensated for his time to sit up here, but I really do want to thank not only this board, but all the boards in District 58. While board members or boards may have differences, they all, ever since I've been a teacher in the school district, everyone always is attempting to do what they think is best for kids. And that's a huge compliment, and so I do want to take some time to, you know, celebrate Board Member Recognition Day, which is tomorrow, and thank the Board of Education for your service. So at your seats, you will find a certificate from the Illinois Association of School Boards recognizing that. So thank you again on behalf of a grateful staff and a grateful community for all that you do, because it's not an easy job. All right, I also want to have a celebration. Although he's not here tonight, I want to congratulate Leanlon Wagner on successfully completing his doctoral degree. Dr. Wagner is the principal of Pierce Downer, and I believe he's out celebrating with his family right now, but that's also a very good accomplishment and one that we want to celebrate publicly. So congratulations to Dr. Wagner. We are going to skip the Curriculum Instruction Report. Justin just gave his, and Todd has a bunch of finance stuff coming up, so we're going to skip that as well. In terms of personnel, I just want to let the community and the board know that the district has begun the process to fill two very important administrative vacancies for next school year, due to the well-deserved retirements of Dr. Jane Uzentis, our Assistant Superintendent of Personnel, and Matt Derbala, O'Neill Middle School Principal. The district will conduct multiple rounds of interviews for each position, and hiring teams will include representatives from all stakeholder groups. We hope to name the next Assistant Superintendent for Personnel at the December or January board meeting, and we hope to name the next O'Neill Middle School Principal at the February or March board meeting, which would be consistent with our previous timeline. So again, we want to thank both Jane and Matt for all that they have done and will continue to do, and just let the community know that we are filling positions like we normally do. In terms of technology, I want to highlight some great work done by Dr. Ike Miller, which will be a huge savings to the district. Last spring, the district learned that we would be receiving a new private fiber optic network to connect our schools. This network will come at no cost to the district, with funding from both the state and federal governments. Over the summer, inside work was completed, and as of today, outside work on school property is completed in all but two schools. In fact, I think if you check Twitter, there's an actual picture out there that James put out. Over the coming months, you may notice tariffs on group trucks working throughout our schools and district boundaries. These fiber contractors are working on installing this fiber network, which we hope will be fully operational before the end of the school year. Once complete, this network will provide us with increased performance and save us over $100,000 in costs per school year for many years to come. So great work on that, James.
Thank you.
In terms of student services, I want to just give a special thanks to our preschool team. Preschool is the one, or this couple of grade levels, that has a mandatory audit every, or every so often, from the State Board of Education, where they come in and observe the teachers. Our preschool team, both at Henry Puffer and Indian Trail, just finished that. I know we have Tracy from Indian Trail here, but I do want to thank our preschool director, Susan Dillon, and Jessica Stewart, who oversees the program. It's a lot of work to go through that kind of an audit, especially with someone looking at you as you're doing it the whole time, and they did a really nice job. For those of you who don't know, our preschool program is a gold-rated program, which is the highest rating you can receive from the state board, and so we're very happy to go through another audit, and we welcome the findings, which will become available in the fall. In terms of public relations, it's hard to believe it's that time of year, but District 58 invites the community to participate or volunteer at the Grove Express 5K on Thanksgiving morning in downtown Downers Grove. This community event replaced the Bond Field 5K last year, and proceeds will be split among the Education Foundation of District 58, the Downers Grove Rotary Club, and the Roadrunner Soccer Club. To learn more, you can check out the website, groveexpress.com. Also, just another thing in public relations, and this is perfect timing, because tomorrow we're supposed to get our first measurable snow, District 58 will send out its annual winter weather communication tomorrow to all families. This message will also be sent in Wednesday's Communicate 58. Families, please review this information so that you're prepared in the event school is called off or a remote learning day is called. It is definitely that time of the year already. Facilities. Attached to the business office report is a review of the playground work that has been done throughout the district, playground updates, although part of the master facilities plan were not included in the referendum funds. District 58 has been very fortunate that both members of the community have stepped up, and Representative Savan Murray assisted us with grants, over $1 million in state funding. It's another great opportunity for grants. So there's a lot of work going on in this summer. While you might not see all the referendum work starting yet because of the public bidding process and the design process, we will certainly be really trying to finalize a lot of our playground work so we can get that done before we move forward with the referendum. And I'm going to end by wishing everyone in the District 58 community a very happy Thanksgiving. Our team is truly grateful that we get the opportunity to work with the student staff, families, board members, and community members of the district. So happy Thanksgiving. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, Dr. Russell, I have a question. When you talked about the work ahead for, now that the referendum is passed, and a lot of the hard work is really... lot of the hard work is really starting in earnest now, can you share with me your vision for how you see the district reaching out and collaborating with the community around a vision for how, for, take, for example, the expansion of both middle schools, how we're going to get community feedback, not just from our community, but from our staff, from our students, and so on, in terms of how we want that space to look?
Yeah, it's a great question. So a lot of the feedback, we've already started that process, right? Over the last several years, whether that is through surveys, the community engagement process, the citizen task force, that helped us lead to the initial designs. Well, now that the referendum has passed, now we have to sit down with our architects and our construction management firm that will be up for approval, and we've got to finalize that design process. So there'll be some opportunities for micro-community meetings, and what I mean by that, one of the things that attracted us to the construction management firm was their willingness to meet with neighbors and talk about the impact that the construction may have in their particular neighborhood. So that's a good example of that. The other thing, though, that as we finalize the design process, the Board of Education will be the ultimate group that approves the final designs and approves the construction that's going to take place. But we certainly want to continue to gather feedback in several forms. And so first and foremost, because this is still part of the strategic plan, goal number three, the district leadership team will have a huge role, and the district leadership team is a very appropriate group to get a lot of that feedback and to bounce ideas up our architects and construction management firm, because it's representative of families, two board members, and every employee group that we have. So that's one way that we want to continue to do that. Then, depending on the situation, we're also going to be seeking feedback from other established committees, so the FAC, the Financial Advisory Council, that's a great group that we want to bring back a lot of the financial things to, to make sure we're on target. The superintendent's Community Advisory Council will help advise me on whether we're hitting the target with public engagement, do they feel they have enough information? And then, of course, just like District 99 did, there will be several opportunities for informational sessions prior to board votes on important topics like middle school design, where we can gather feedback from our staff, and we can gather feedback from the community. While many of the designs aren't going to allow for significant changes, let me give you an example of that, HVAC, right? That's not something we can go back to the community and say, okay, who would like the pipe to go over here, or who would like this to be here? You know, that's kind of already baked into the cake. There are certain things, like when we design the gymnasiums or the libraries, that certainly we want to hear from our staff to make sure they're functioning. When we design science labs, we want to hear from staff and the community, is this what, are we hitting the right mark? Before we ask the board to approve those, so there will be engagement opportunities, and they'll be very similar to, you know, the community forums that we held before.
Just to kind of follow up on that as well, one of the things I think is going to be really important as we move forward on this, since we're talking about this right now, is the communication process of exactly what the timeline would look like. I think one of the things we heard about in this process is everyone wanted to kind of know exactly what this arc would look like, but until we kind of got here, we couldn't iron that out until we got working with the construction management firm and the architect, and obviously, supply chains and everything that, like, we may want to prioritize one thing, but supply chains might tell us to prioritize another thing. So I think making sure we're communicating, and I think there's a lot of excitement around it, when you sort of get people that say, all right, we trust you, and we're going to trust you with this amount of money, one of the things that they look for is for us to kind of explain now what that process is going to look like. So I know it's going to take us a little bit of time here to kind of get our footing and get everybody kind of working, but that's one thing I'm looking forward to, is getting that communication out and really kind of sharing that information as well.
Yeah, such a great point, and I was just talking with our architect firm on the phone today about this very topic, right? And so one of the things is to make sure sooner rather than later, and we're in the process of doing this, once the construction management firm gets approved, we want our construction management firm and our architect to sit down and to talk about reasonable timeframes, and when do we think we can get things accomplished, so then we can put that out to the community about, you know, here's the batting order, so to speak, and this is how we're going to go through those. One of the fairest questions I got in our community engagement sessions, well, what's the priority, or which one goes first, right? And I had to answer that very honestly to say, you know, a lot of it is going to be dependent on the supply chain, the availability of labor, when we're able to accomplish those things. But that is certainly one of the first things that we have to do in this process, because then we have to go out and publicly bid and do all those things. So over the next several months, that is exactly the work that we're going to be doing and communicating that out to our families, so then they know that if there's a particular area of focus that they want to, you know, give us feedback on, they'll have the opportunity to do that.
And another aspect of that is dependencies, right? You know, like, there are certain projects we can't do until we do, until we do our electrical, we can't do HVAC, you know, things like that. So making sure that we continue to communicate that, I think is communicatively important. So thank you. Anybody else? Any other comments, questions? All right. Mr. Dreifel, the monthly business and treasurer's report.
Glad you brought up electricity, the first thing is transformers, yes.
Yeah.
Before I get to the action items that we'll talk about a little bit, we have on your monthly report, your year-to-date report, operational things are moving along as expected, revenues coming in. You've got, before, we, we are going to, if you look at the revenue side on interest income, when we projected that out, I think that was three Fed rate increases ago, or something like that, you know, we will probably hit 100% before end of calendar year, which would be six months into the fiscal year. So because of the other items on the agenda, and because of what the voters approved on Tuesday night, you know that you'll have an amended budget at some point at the year end, because we'll have adjustments according to what we had planned and anticipated when we had the, you know, the budget up to what will be actual at the end, so we'll make those adjustments. But overall, we're in a good position revenue and expense-wise comparative to previous years and where we are in a normal, normal year. There's one thing we wanted to bring up, because as we're getting into the conversation of the next steps after the referendum, during COVID, we had 27 containers on property for storage of things that we couldn't have in the buildings. We're down to three. So as we whittle those away and get down to the bare minimum for someday having the next trailer, which will be a construction trailer, at our sites as we do, do work and updates to all of our buildings. So that's exciting. We've been, the operations department's been working through with our teams that are buildings and reducing those as well. This is also, tomorrow's the last day for open enrollment, so any employees that are listening or watching, please, you know, we have a few more people to go through, but this has been our open enrollment for insurance. It's been very positive. We were out to, I think, seven or eight different buildings, as well as a couple of virtual meetings, and we've been answering a lot of email and phone call questions going through that, so we're excited about finishing that up. You have on your, as promised a couple of months ago, when the board went through and prioritized the companies for construction management, we said we would bring back at this meeting, provided there was a favorable vote, a contract, a base contract, and that is what you have in your documents this evening for construction management, for the top pick that we had ranked as number one of Bullion Andrews. And so that is before you, that is helped, it was prepared and worked on with them and with our legal firm, Hodges-Louisey, to come up with the baseline piece. There will be addendums to that contract as we work through the process and develop the structure system that gets into a little more detail of what parts become a project, and, you know, does that include all of the additions in the middle schools as one project and that type of thing, as we get into the nuts and bolts. So getting into, as we stated, as Dr. Russell pointed out, the election, the referendum did pass by 67%. One of the pieces that we have talked about and been very straightforward with the community in managing expectations of, we won't have air conditioning in schools in August of '23. It will take some time. The next steps are, you know, working on that process and getting everyone working towards building drawings and so forth. To do that, we need to have some funds, and we need to start that and move that process up. Given volatility of market, it's advantageous to do that sooner rather than later and reduce interest rate risk. To that end, we have an agenda that we have before you, two resolutions, parameter resolutions for the board to move that to the next steps, where they will be going out and starting to market and sell those bonds. We have two rating agency meetings set up for tomorrow. We are going to be presenting to Standard and Poor's and to Moody's tomorrow morning and afternoon. Had those set for some time, and that is our next step moving forward. By the end of November, we will be pricing the bonds and developing, having those come into sale. A couple of the things we wanted to point out to make sure is that they're tax-exempt bonds as such, and under the state of Illinois, we have to have a reasonable expectation of spending what we're going to borrow initially in a three-year period. We've developed kind of a rough sketch as to what that is, and so therefore, our first initial number, even though the parameters resolution is a full 179, is probably going to be significantly less than that. It's probably going to be somewhere in the about $120 million range as the first issuance, because as we've talked about, we won't be doing heavy, heavy construction next summer. We'll be spending 10 or 15 or 20 million dollars, like we will do the following in summers after that. So that makes that adjustment as to what we think we're going to spend in those two, in the next three, as to what our ask will be in the initial piece. So we'll be breaking this up into two, our expectation right now is into two separate sales, one that will happen quite quickly here, by end of calendar year, and then one that will happen down the road as we work through our process, and, you know, we work on a monthly basis with reporting to the board, you know, as well as with the FAC as to when it comes time to borrow those funds and to go through this again with the marketing and so forth. So try to limit it to a number, every time you go out and do a marketing and a bond sale, there is, obviously, there's costs to that, we try to minimize those, but in this case, you know, it's just that what the law requires and what our timeframes are for how we, how we're going to work through that. With that, is there any questions on, as far as the issuance?
Questions from, okay. No, I feel like we've had 1,000, the FAC, we've had 1,000 conversations.
Yeah, we've, yeah, the FAC went through this in a little more detail and, you know, and the conversation as to how we're, you know, working this through, so.
No, I appreciate it, and we got all your memos and everything else, so thank you.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, the legislative committee has not met since our last meeting, I'm sorry, the policy meeting group has not, but the legislative committee has, they met on October 26th. Dr. Russell?
Yeah, I'm going to give the update on behalf of Member Hannis and Member Ellis. We, it's that time of year as we go to the Triple I Conference, which is this weekend. At the Triple I Conference, there's an opportunity to have a delegate from the board vote on resolutions or action items that the ISB wants to take. Just to be clear for the community, these are not resolutions that turn into law, they are more of advocacy statements or, you know, to the mission and vision of the Illinois Association of School Boards, but we do think it's a good thing that they let their members weigh in on those. And so on the action items today, under the consent agenda, which is our typical format, you will see what those resolutions are. They are much shorter this year, I think in previous years, we've had north of 20. This year, I believe it's eight or nine, and they did include, though, in the report of the resolutions, which are submitted by member districts, and then there's a board that, you know, determines whether or not they're going to move those forward at ISB. They did include all of those, but very few of them made it all the way through. And so we, what we do as a legislative committee is we take a look at these, we look at the rationale of the district that submitted them, and then we look at the rationale of the ISB board that is saying whether or not to, you know, adopt that resolution or not adopt this. We had some very healthy discussions while, you know, it's not a binding vote or anything like that. All of it was unanimous as we went through the legislative committee, and in terms of the recommendations, the committee is actually matching all of the ISB recommendations this time, which usually doesn't happen, but this time it did. And certainly, as we get into the consent agenda, if anyone has anything they'd like to pull up separately that is permissible, but if anyone has any questions about the dialogue that we had as a committee, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
So it seems like in the past, you've had a little, some more controversial resolutions on the list here, and we have, like you said, we have seen some misalignment between what the ISB is recommending and what our committee eventually recommended. So I guess around any of these items, would you describe any of the, would you describe, would you say there's any friction among the committee in terms of coming to consensus on any of the issues?
Yeah, I would say there were two kind of talking points this year. First, there's a lot of wishes from member districts that the State Board of Education or the state would find money to grant things to districts, and I think there was some healthy skepticism on the community about whether or not it's even worth going along with the recommendation, because the state would never do that anyway. Like, so you've got a couple on there, like, we want increased funding for safety in schools, or we want increased funding for construction in schools, and I think, given the state's track record, several members expressed their, you know, is this really ever going to happen? But we, having said that, the members of the committee, the majority of them, did not want to be in a position of not being in favor of the state giving school districts grants for construction, for obvious reasons, or, or safety. In the past, there have been, well, the most controversial one since I've been a superintendent in the state of Illinois is whether or not staff should be armed, and whether or not that should be something that the ISB should actively lobby. That did not make it through this year, so that was not one that we discussed. There was one that we spent some time discussing, and that was whether or not a licensed gun dealership, which we don't have any here in District 58, should be 500 feet from a school or 1,500 feet from a school. Mundaline School District was recommending that it be 1,500 feet from a school. The ISB didn't support that, not because they favor having gun dealerships near schools, but in this particular resolution, they wanted to know, is there truly a difference in student safety between 500 and 1,500 feet? Where do they get that 1,500 feet? Why not 2,000? Why not 5,000? And so there was some talk about that. And then ultimately, they also wanted to know, you know, how many school districts find themselves in this position, and what happens to those businesses that are already established? Does that mean they close, which could jeopardize tax revenue and things like that? So we spent some time talking about that, but for the most part, they were pretty quick conversations this year. Another one that we talked about was Naperville School District 203, was recommending that the state provide funding for electric school buses. Naperville, unlike District 58, is a district that has its own busing, and so they're advocating for getting grants for the state. Several districts, including 58, would take issue with that, because we're not getting grants, because we contract that out, and the state is not living up to its transportation needs right now, so why would we shift to something else? Not a green energy argument, but why would we subsidize other districts when some districts aren't getting that? And so that was a conversation that we had as well. But I think that summed up the conversation that we had.
Any other comments or questions from the board? That brings us to the Financial Advisory Committee, which met last Thursday, November 10th. In that particular meeting, we reviewed the year-to-date report, as we always do, and went through a little bit more detail on the playground update that's attached in your, on the board book this evening, for anyone who hasn't seen it. We did welcome Mr. Coyne again from Oppenheimer to kind of help walk through the, some of the bond process, because we did go through a lot of detail and talk about what those bond issuances could look, you know, what they look like, what that process looks like. The FAC has been a really good sounding board, kind of throughout this whole process of how this thing works, kind of a nice check and balance during, during this process, and just a lot of questions about timing and how, you know, and how that process is going to work. It was a, it was a really good conversation on there, as well as discussing the fact that we're going to go out to both S&amp;P and Moody's to get another bond rating. We used to, you know, previously, for small measures, we've had one, but when we did our last bond rating, we did get two as well, to start establishing a little bit of history with both, and now we'll go back out to both again before we go out to market, as well as we did a kind of a final review. The FAC had been involved in the recommendation to go with a contract management firm and go with that at-risk model that we talked about previously, so we spent a little bit of time just talking about that contract as well. So we spent a little bit of time just talking about that contract as well and that process that we would go through. The final piece we did talk about is, in, in the meeting was, we are getting to the point where we're coming up to the tax levy, that'll come up next month. As many of you know, CPI is well above the cap that has been set for our district as we are tax capped at 5%. Well, when you, when you hit that tap, that, that cap, we are required to have a truth and taxation hearing, so that will happen next month when that comes forward. So, you know, we've had those, we've had those before, we just opened up the meeting at the beginning. So with that, I will go to member Olchak and see if I missed anything.
No, nothing missed. I just think, you know, great, great dialogue and I think, you know, kind of where we're at is even more great dialogue, like our, how do we kind of move past this referendum and continue to tap into that expertise that's in that room? So I think future dialogue is going to be even more engaging and, and we're definitely going to capitalize with the, the great expertise that, that volunteered for that committee.
Yes. All right, with that, that includes my report, but I'll take any questions.
Darren, I have just one. Can you, I've seen a little chatter in the community about this at-risk and I know we've talked about it before, would you mind explaining one more go, what the at-risk is in the, in the setup of the bullying?
Sure, and I will, I mean.
Because I know it's, it sounds scarier than it actually is.
It's actually the opposite.
Because we've actually, yeah, exactly. It has the opposite meaning of what the title is, so I think it.
Absolutely.
It would move us to again, just clarify one more time what that means.
And the briefest piece is that they, the contract, contract management firm holds all the subcut, they, it's all bid, it all still has to be approved, the board has to approve that, but they will hold the contracts of the subcontractors and they will verify the insurance piece and that all of those meet the criteria and so forth, as opposed to the district taking on that, that responsibility liability. That's really the difference. Anything I'm missing?
Yeah, yeah, we're passing on that liability primarily. And then the other component is, is having them own a lot of this process. Sometimes when you don't go at-risk, you literally will bring on another person internally to just kind of help manage through that process. This, this kind of takes that pressure off of us internally and allows the experts kind of to help us through that process because this is a, this is a much larger project than we as a district are, are used to working with.
Thank you. And to clarify, I understood what at-risk meant, just for the community to know.
Yeah.
I understood it, but I just wanted to make sure that it was really, you know, revisited again because now that we're voting on it, I think it's important to just.
Absolutely.
Clarify that. Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions, comments? All right, thank you. That brings us to the district leadership team who did not meet, neither did health and wellness. So we have no discussion items tonight, so that brings us on to the public comment portion of the meeting. You want to check the basket to see if we have any public comments tonight? This is the opportunity for members of the audience to share a public comment with the board, but is not intended for a time for members of the audience to enter into a dialogue with the board. Issued, raised tonight during public comment, may be added to future agendas or addressed by administrative, straight of staff when appropriate. The board has allocated 30 minutes tonight for public comment, but we ask everyone to keep it to a three-minute limit to allow everyone an opportunity to speak at this time. Did we receive any cards? We do not have any cards, so I will, since we do have the time allotted, I will check and see if there is anyone here tonight that did not leave a card, but would like to leave a public comment. All right. All right, that brings us down to the approval of minutes. Are there any suggested revisions to the minutes as presented in the packet of materials? All right, if not, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the October 11th, 2022 regular meeting as presented?
So moved.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carried to approve the minutes of the October 11th, 2022 regular meeting as presented. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the October 24th, 2022 curriculum workshop as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion.
I have to abstain, sorry. I was there.
No problem. Motion carried to approve the minutes of the October 24th, 2022 curriculum workshop as presented. All right, first up is the consent agenda. Are there any items a board member would like to have considered separately?
President Hughes would like to consider item C separately.
Okay. Member Harris is asking for the ISB resolutions to be voted on separately. Anything else? All right, and then is there a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the personnel report and financial statements, which consists of the list of bills and summary? Just looking for a motion.
Oh, so moved. Second.
All right, Melissa, please call roll.
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Ellis.
Aye.
Member Hannis.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Olchak.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye. The motion carried, the consent agenda has been approved as presented in the packet of materials. That brings us up to the first recommended item, which is now the 2022 ISB recommendations. Are there any resolutions a board member would like to have considered separately?
I would like to consider number three.
Number three? Anyone else? Then is there a motion to approve the positions of each resolution in the 2022 resolution committee report as presented in the attached spreadsheet with the exception of resolution number three and direct the ISB delegate Emily Hannis to cast her vote accordingly on behalf of District 58?
So moved. Second.
All right, any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to explain why I pulled this. I was unaware that you were going to want to talk about number three separately, so I'm glad I did that. The reason why is since I've been on the board, this is something that we just kind of approved, that we're thinking about and then that kind of sets up for some trouble maybe four or five years ago when we had an issue and we, so we had, we had a debate back and forth about like, where, where is the recommendation for these, these resolutions to come from? Is that coming from the committee or is, and the board is rubber stamping that or is the board in the driver's seat? So we've had a lot of good conversations and we've had a lot of controversial conversations. This year, thankfully, everything is very vanilla, but I did not want to miss an opportunity to make sure that we are kind of, we are all kind of on the record on this issue and that we are at least making sure that we're talking about it and not just rubber stamping something. So that's why I wanted to vote on, on the whole, in entirety separately and, and I'm happy to talk about number three as well separately.
Okay. Any discussion on number three would be when that item comes up, but any other questions on, on the other ones besides number three?
No.
All right, since you did call this separately, I can do this as just a all-in-favor vote, but did you want it to be a roll call vote?
Nope.
Okay.
Same time.
All right, then all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carried to approve the positions on each resolution in the 2022 resolutions committee report as presented in the spreadsheet with the exception of resolution number three and direct the ISB delegate Emily Hannis to cast her vote accordingly on behalf of District 58. Now I'm looking for a motion regarding resolution number three. I don't know if I need to read the resolution.
Is the motion going to be to approve it or to not approve it?
So the ISB is recommending that this not get adopted. So then.
So if a vote for yes would be to not adopt.
Depending on what member Hannis is proposing, is she, is she, is her, is her motion to adopt?
The motion was to take it separately. So are the recommendation that came in, what's on the board tonight is to, a yes vote would mean to recommend not to adopt. If you, if you want to adopt it, you would vote no.
So I just need to hear the, the language of the.
Right, just ask for her motion.
Oh, you want me to?
Yeah, so she should have a motion to either adopt or not adopt.
All right. So then I just need the dialogue for you.
Yes.
How you, how would you, you would like to present the motion, yeah?
Well, I mean, my understanding that the motion is, the committee was recommending to not adopt that particular resolution. I just wanted to separate that from the rest so that we could discuss that one separately and have a vote on that one individual item separate from the others.
So do you want a motion?
Committee's recommendation.
Do you just want the motion then to be number three? Is the motion then to support the ISB to not adopt the fire alarm dealer location resolution? And then.
That's not what I want the motion to be.
I understand, but is that how you want the language to be and a no vote would be yes? Or, or do you want me to flip it and ask it the other way?
No, I would say it makes more sense to keep.
Keep it aligned.
The language aligned with the other vote on the.
So your motion is to adopt the, the resolution from Mundaline CHSD District 210?
Yes, I think what Emily.
But what she's saying is she wants to leave it, the language, she's wanting to vote to not adopt it, but she's saying, the motion that she's saying, lack of confusion.
I think it might make more sense to keep the language the same as the language we voted on on the previous one.
You can't vote against.
And I can just vote against.
No, if you're motioning, I need you to vote in affirmative.
In favor of the.
So I will, I will flip that, okay?
Yes, so then I would like to motion to adopt Mundaline's resolution.
And so.
Can we discuss prior to it?
That would be moving.
And I'll give my explanation.
Yeah, that would be moving it from 500 feet to 1,500 feet.
Number three.
So my rationale, we need a second.
All right, hold on one second, let me read the motion. All right, is there a motion regarding resolution number three to adopt the resolution to support legislation to increase the distance of a gun store or any facility selling firearms or ammunition to be located in relation to the school from 500 feet to 1,500 feet? And that is brought forward by Mundaline School District 210. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, now we can discuss, yeah.
Okay, so my rationale behind this, my decision to, to take this position as a school district and as a board, one of our ultimate priorities is the safety and security of our students, of course. In my view, this is very reasonable, rational, common sense type of potential for legislation down the road, should, you know, that be what Illinois decides to do, that moving gun dealerships places that are selling guns and ammunition and things farther away from schools just makes reasonable logical sense in my view in terms of safety and security of students. Obviously, I understand where the ISB committee and our legislative committee comes, in terms of, you know, data and how do we support, how do we determine how far and how far is far enough and I, I understand all of that, but ultimately, at the end of the day, I also think, when you're talking about 500 feet, that's really close. Like, that's really close to a school. And if that was one of our schools and granted, you know, we mentioned, oh, well, there's no, there's none of this in Dallas, well, okay, but we never know when that could change and I also think, you know, as, as educators and promoters of public education, we need to be thinking kind of more big picture and especially on, on something as important as this. And so there's lots of other examples of legislation that's passed that's specific to school districts and like, for example, school speed zone laws that are in place. You know, they determined at some point in time, one was a reasonable distance to say this many, you know, X number of blocks from a school, we're going to have a school speed zone and we're going to put a law in place that says that if you're, you know, the speed zone is different within those X number of blocks from a school for the safety of students involved. I don't think this is all that different from that. I think, yes, are there specifics that were worked out and, you know, like Kevin mentioned, okay, you have one that's already in place and they have been, you know, legally, you know, abiding by all the rules and all those kinds of things. How do, how do we factor that all in? Yes, those are issues that would need to be addressed and worked out and things like that, but ultimately, I think as a, as a school board, we should be supporting anything that's going to help promote safety and security of our students to the utmost level that we possibly can. And I don't think 1,500 feet from a school is unreasonable, so.
Dr. Russell, would you mind just rehashing the rationale for why the ISB is not recommending adopting this and why our legislative committee ultimately leaned towards not adopting this?
Yeah, so it's, it's always hard to, you know, because we're not in the room when the ISB is making, we're, we're reading it, right? I think both the ISB though and the committee agree with everything that Emily said. I, I don't think it's a matter of no one wanting more safety in, I, I don't, never want to use a word like indifferent, but I think the reason why the committee said we'll go along with the ISB was to send a signal back to Mundaline, we support this, but let's get a little bit more specific about implementation, what this would look like, some of the research behind that, and then we can support it. And so that was really the only hang up and, and why I think the ISB did not move completely forward with this. And so that's what the committee was, was really talking about and looking for, but in terms of school safety and proximity and all that, I don't think there was any disagreement with what Emily had shared. So if this were to move forward, you know, the board would, would vote with Emily and, you know, take this recommendation, I, I don't think that the committee would be angry with that at all, but I do think we would have to go to ISB and say, okay, let's get some more specifics in here if you're going to go lobby on behalf of this new legislation.
And there was another one, I'm not going to remember which one it was last year, where it was, it made a lot of sense, I remember having a good lightning dream about it, but at the end of the day, the ISB and our committee felt like it was kind of half-baked.
Yeah, so that one, that one was about gun storage. And one of the things that I wish that would have come back on right now, I think we were all nervous about, well, why should school board be in people's homes and all that and we wanted a little bit more of the research. I would tell you Glenn Ellen 41, who brought that up when I attended the League of Women Voter Session, they came back with the research and talked about how if you have this legislation, how it does impact school shootings and how it does reduce the number of fatalities in schools. So if they would have brought that back, I, I think you would have had a lot more support for that where a year ago it was a little more cloudy. So I think we're in a very similar situation with this one as well this school year. But again, I don't think anyone on the committee would disagree with what Emily shared.
I guess my concern, because I don't, I don't think gun dealers belong near a school either in the same way that we've heard conversations around that with, you know, marijuana dispensaries and other stuff as well. I do worry that this is an arbitrary kind of, I'm, I'm wondering if that, this seems like it would have been a slam dunk, easy thing for the ISB to support if there was, maybe if it was fully formed, I'm just wondering if that's maybe what, like, hearing you makes me wonder if it's just not ready for, for primetime yet. Is this the argument to go? It, you know, is this somebody going after something specific and maybe you, actual bigger research has to be done? Or are we supporting something that actually makes logical, logical sense? I mean, 500 feet does seem close, I mean.
Certainly in.
But do we have any idea how many school districts have gun dealerships?
Well, I, I think when you look at, at downwards, because we have neighborhood schools and our schools are in neighborhoods where they're zoned, you're, you're not going to see businesses like this, right? And I would have a hard time believing a village council would pass a, a different zoning to allow a business to open up across the street from LCRA, right? Or, or another school like that. However, certainly this is a case in Mundaline, right? Because that's why they brought this forward, that, that's what they're trying to prevent. It's always tough because Illinois is just such a diverse state and zoning laws vary between municipalities. This could be a reality in some towns where some towns are worried about losing a local business or may have a different, you know, take on guns or whatever the case may be. So again, the committee conversation, we just wanted some more information about what this would look like and, and how this law would be implemented. It wasn't about, you know, we, you know, aren't concerned about gun violence or anything like that in our schools.
Well, I think Darren, to your point, one of the hard parts about it is, like you said, you know, without the data to support it, how do you know? Or, or maybe we just need to have this more fully formed before we can get behind it. But I, I think also part of it is if there's never, if we never like put any pressure, so to speak, on issues like this, do they always just like linger and nothing ever gets done? Whereas if you get a lot of support behind something, you're kind of forcing the hand of lawmakers to come up with the solutions and to come up with the, okay, let's, let's really dig in and research and figure this out, what is going to be most effective? And if that pressure is never there, maybe those things will never come to be if we never put the pressure. It's kind of what came first, chicken or the egg type of argument sometimes, I think. So that's, you know, part of my rationale to do that.
Well, and to kind of play into your argument then as well, because this is a lobbying side of the ISB, this is not written legislation by lobbying specifically for 1,500 feet. We could also make the argument that the pressure that you put on, it may not come to 1,500 feet, it may come to 3,000 or it may come to 750, but potentially you're opening up.
Conversation.
The conversation on, you know, some of the ones that we talk about seem so, this one feels specific and I think that's what makes it a, a challenge sometimes unless I know it's going to do, but like, sometimes it, it's hard. No, this one I think could kind of go either way, that you could, you could spark a conversation and maybe do something, even if it doesn't look like what Mundaline is, is requesting, but, you know, it, it's hard in, in these particular things because I don't know that I, I, without knowing what we know, it's hard to have a real strong opinion on what[1756.01] I, without knowing what we know, it's hard to have a real strong opinion on what you're sort of advocating for, you know, to begin with.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with what I'm saying with Epsom. I really don't, I didn't come to this meeting prepared to discuss this, so I, I don't know if I feel strongly about it either way, to either support our committee or support our committee and the IASB or to buck our committee and the IASB. So, yeah, I think it's just, it's just a half, it's a half-baked idea that just needs a little bit more, more time to be fleshed out before we can understand like how it's going to impact our schools and how it's going to impact our communities.
Any other comments from other board members?
Well, I want to make one thing clear that's in the law, the ILCS, is that it's none, no newly established firearm or gun dealer within 500 feet. So it would grandfather in those already existing. So the law itself says no newly established. For that reason, I would support-
That's what they're advocating for?
That's, no, that's what 40 ILCS states.
That doesn't mean, that doesn't say that it's going to be newly established gun dealers-
No, 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 but they're asking to change that particular, when you go to the IASB, this is just a-
This is ours.
This is just our spreadsheet, yeah. When you go to the actual one, they reference the law and the law.
Manual, yeah.
Yeah, you follow the breadcrumbs through the law and the law says no newly established. So they're advocating for that 500 feet to change to 1,500 feet in the law, right? And it states in the law, no newly established.
So Mundaline, when they came up with this, is tying it back to that existing law that you're talking about?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so that was my understanding of how this was written.
Okay.
And so when you go that deep down, and unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend the legislative committee meeting, I had COVID oddly in October of 2022. So I wasn't able to attend that one, but had I attended, I probably would have brought that point forward because I think that that is a pretty key factor that I don't know if it was or was not considered by the IASB committee, but it's one that I would have considered had I been on that committee and had I made it to this legislative committee meeting and had my input there. So for that reason, I'll be supporting Emily on this one.
And just to be clear, if the board, you know, goes in a different direction from the committee, that is something we're always very clear about with every one of our committees, that the ultimate decision rests with the school board and sometimes the school board will bring up points that perhaps the committee didn't consider. And so again, I don't think you're going to have people all of a sudden jump off of committees saying, if you're not going to support this. This is not the one. I think, again, to summarize the committee, it was more of, let's just get some more information before we move forward with this. I think hearing the conversation here, if the board decides to go in a different direction, I really don't think you're going to get a lot of upset customers, if that makes sense.
If you want to speak.
Any other last minute comments or suggestions?
So how is it going to-
If you vote yes, we are supporting, we're recommending that they adopt. If we say no, we're recommend, no, yes. If we say yes, it's recommending to adopt. If it's no, it's, we're recommending that they don't adopt. So it's backwards from the committee recommendation.
You're supporting what I'm reporting.
How do we know?
If you say no, then you're going with the legislative committee. Yes, makes sense.
Okay.
How do you know the intention of the resolution is to-
All right.
Because they failed to put the word in.
Anything else? All right, Melissa, please go roll.
Member Hannis.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Olchek.
Aye.
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Ellis.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Motion carried. I'm going to go back and read this again. To adopt the resolution for number three to recommend that the IASB adopt supporting legislation to increase distance from a gun store or any facility selling firearms or ammunition that may be located in relation to a school from 500 feet to 1,500 feet. Next up is a resolution for the issuance of $179 million in general obligation school bonds. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution providing for the issue of not to exceed $179 million of general obligation school bonds of the district for the purpose of altering, repairing, or equipping school buildings, providing for the levy of a direct annual tax sufficient to pay the principal and interest on said bonds and authorizing the sale of said bonds to the purchaser thereof?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
We can come back to it.
If you did all the readings, we must on that.
Oh, yeah, I'll do that one next.
What do we, a second?
We've got one, second.
All right, cool.
Do we even qualify?
Do you have a motion in a second?
I do.
All right, any discussion? No? All right. Melissa, please call roll.
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Ellis.
Aye.
Member Hannis.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Olchek.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye. The motion carried to adopt the resolution providing the issue of not to exceed $179 million of general obligation school bonds of the district for the purposes of altering, repairing, or equipping school buildings, providing for the levy of a direct annual tax sufficient to pay the principal and interest of said bonds and authorizing the sale of said bonds to the purchaser thereof. Next up is a resolution for the issuance of $3 million taxable general obligation limited tax refunding bonds. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution providing for the issuance of, or the issue of not to exceed $3 million taxable general obligation limited tax refunding bonds of the district for the purposes of refunding certain outstanding bonds, providing for the levy of a direct annual tax to pay the principal and interest of said bonds and authorizing the sale of said bonds to the purchaser thereof?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion on that one? All right, Melissa, please go roll.
Member Olchek.
Aye.
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Ellis.
Aye.
Member Hannis.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye. The motion carried to adopt the resolution providing for the issue of not to exceed $3 million in taxable general obligation limited tax refunding bonds of the district for the purpose of refunding certain outstanding bonds, providing for the levy of a direct annual tax to pay the principal and interest of said bonds and authorizing the sale of said bonds to the purchase thereof. Is there a motion now to adopt the American Education Week Resolution as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion on that? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carried to adopt the American Education Week Resolution. All right, and last up is the construction management contract. Is there a motion to approve the construction management contract with Bully and Andrews as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
I just have one thing that's not going to derail anything, I promise. Ongoing, we've talked a little bit about what our expectations are going to be on a go-forward, and I know that we have some representatives in the room, I can see. So for me, as we go forward through the architecture plans and the awarding to contractors and subcontractors, I think it's incredibly important that we keep our eye on, and for those that are going to be on the DLT and the FAC working on this on the board, that we keep our eye on our contractors and subcontractors having the proper certifications for the materials that they are installing. It's not required by law to have those kinds of certifications, but it will help with